Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Mashpee. January 22nd Mashpee Selectmen's Meeting. If you will all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And again, if you'll just all join us for a moment of silence for all of those who have lost their lives protecting our rights and freedoms. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
I make a motion to approve the following minutes from Monday, January 8, 2018, regular session.
Second.
Second.
And we'll call on that? Yes.
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 Thank you. And I hear that I have the honor of being the chairman this time around and I'd like to ask the coach, Mr. Trevi, to come up and his team captains. For those in the audience who aren't aware, which they should be aware, that this is the third time around, Super Bowl champions, Division III, the state of Massachusetts. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Great job. Very proud of all of you. Great effort and I know a lot of work and hard work and effort goes into this. So, with all that being said, I'm going to read to you a proclamation by the Town of Mashpee for the team. This is the proclamation recognizing and honoring the 2017 Division VII State Champion Mashpee Falcons Football Team. It starts, "Whereas the Mashpee High School Football Team completed the 2017 season with a perfect record of 13 wins and no losses. And whereas the Mashpee Falcons made history by winning its third consecutive state championship on December 2, 2017, at Gillette Stadium. And whereas Coach Trevi and the Mashpee High School Football Team won their fourth state crown since the Mashpee High School Football Program inception. And whereas Senior Quarterback Jake Johnston finished on top of the division seven passing offense statistics with 17 touchdown passes." Congratulations. Very good. "And whereas Team Captains Ben Bonnenberg, Toren Burton, John McNamara, and Jake Johnston demonstrated great leadership skills. And whereas Junior Devon Ford completed the 2017 season with 1,244 yards gained and led all in the rushing categories for Division VII. And whereas Defensive End Xavier Gonzalez had 17 sacks in 2007, and the most in Division VII. And whereas Cameron Kergo, Jake Johnston, Devon Ford had a total of 13 interceptions during the 2017 championship seasons." Very impressive, all of these stats. "Whereas Devon Ford and Cameron Kergo led all the Division VII in punt returns. And whereas Ben Bonnenberg, Devon Ford, Xavier Gonzalez, and John McNamara were named to the 2017 MIAA All-State Football Teams. And therefore, we, the Mashpee Board of Selectmen, do hereby extend our sincere congratulations to the 2017 Mashpee High School Falcons Football Team and further confer its commendation for the team's accomplishments." Gentlemen, incredible. Thank you. Family. An awesome, an awesome event. Says a lot about the team and the coaching staff. If you'd like to have a few words, that's up to you.
We just want to thank you, our staff, our players, all the people in Mashpee High School and District. Thank you for the recognition, support, continued support for our schools and leave this ball for you guys as selectmen.
Oh, thank you very much.
From our teachers, from our schools as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks again. Thank you, boys. Thank you. Parents, thank you. Boys. Come on. The Mashpee Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the application of Knockabout Beer Company, LLC, Peter Muira, manager, and new farmer's series pouring permit. The premises is located at 13 Lake Avenue, Mashpee, Mass., and consists of 4, 3, 7, 6 square feet of indoor space and 3,115 square feet of outdoor space with six entrances and six exits and proposed seating capacity of 46. Said hearing will be held Monday, January 22 at 6:35 in the Warburg Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Grape Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Thanks, Karen. Should we have someone represent? We do. Mr. Corain, always a pleasure to see you.
That's a difficult act to follow, so I'll try to be brief. Basically, I have the pleasure of representing Peter and the Knockabout Beer Company in connection with this application for a farmer's pouring permit. About a year and a half ago, we commenced this process by obtaining a special permit from the Mashpee Planning Board to basically renovate a structure which was formerly occupied by Taylor's Restaurant and the Flume. For those of us that have been around for a considerable period of time, may remember that. The permit was to create a microbrewery, brew pub, and restaurant. That permit was subsequently modified by the Planning Board in 2017 because there were some minor changes made to the site and the building plans. And also, construction has been ongoing since that time, and we're very close to a completion of the construction. I have provided the board with copies of some photographs that have been taken relative to what the building looked like before and what the building is currently looks like and what has been done on the interior of that structure. In 2013, the legislature adopted this sort of unique licensing or permitting process, the so-called farmer's series pouring permits, to really promote microbreweries and the use of locally-produced materials in connection with the brewing process. As a brewery, Knockabout has had to receive permits from both the federal government and also the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It has received its permit from both, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts permit allows Knockabout to basically sell its product at retail on-site. And that's product which currently is brewed at other locations under contract with various brewers. This will be a first for Knockabout because they are going to brew their own product on-site. And also, as a part of the state permit, we'll be bringing product in from other locations where it's being brewed. The pouring permit that's issued by the local authority authorizes folks to come in and, like we have, you know, bourbon tastings, Scotch tastings, wine tastings, we're going to have available to us beer tastings at the Knockabout complex. So there are 46 seats. There is a seating and a bar that's available during the summertime. Some of that seating will be moved to the exterior of the structure. The exterior will all be fenced in so that it'll be secure, and all patrons will then be able to sample the beers that are produced, not only on-site, but also beers that are produced for Knockabout from offsite. It's anticipated that the facility would be open seven days a week. The brewery operation would operate between 8 and 5 o'clock. The taproom and pouring and retail sales would occur probably between the hours of 12 o'clock noon and 10 o'clock in the evening. We expect to have initially two to three full-time employees. All employees will be tips-trained so that they will be well-versed in the ability to serve alcohol in a safe and efficient manner. Currently, there is no plans to actually engage in the preparation of food on-site, but we do anticipate entering into contractual arrangements with some food trucks, which will have food available to us on-site that people can purchase, and will have to be licensed directly through our Board of Health for the availability of foods on-site. That could change in the future depending on how successful the sale of food is in conjunction with the brewery operation, but that is not something that we're seeking at the current time. For those of you that have had the opportunity to go out and take a look at the site, there's a significant improvement over the Taylor's facility that was there before. A tremendous amount of effort and time and resources have been plowed into that operation in order to make it a clean and attractive facility that I think the town would be proud to have as part of its commercial community. For those of you that may have had the opportunity, there's one in Dennis operated by Devil's Purse Brewing, Bad Martha's Brewery over on Edgerton, and Hard Island Brewery down in Orleans. I believe there also may be a Cape Cod Brewing in Ahiana. So that's the type of facility that is being proposed, and we would respectfully request that the board act favorably upon this request for a farmer's series pouring permit. If the board has any questions for Peter, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to respond to any questions that the board may have, as would I.
Good. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
What's the short version, Karen? That was the short. Really? Pretty good. Hey, we got you.
Do we have to close the public hearing? Oh, is there anybody in the audience that would like to make comments from this license permit? Nope, seeing none.
Now I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. We'll call on the role on the close, please.
Yes.
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 Great.
Any motion to be approved, licenses repressed?
Second.
Sounds good. Roll call on the?
Yes.
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 Yes. Good luck, Peter.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Very excited to be part of the community, guys.
Yes.
From your perspective, okay.
Yeah.
March 1st.
Right.
March 1st? March 1st is the grand opening.
I need our source guys.
Okay, well, you'll let us know.
We're there for three weeks. We're trying to get them done.
Okay.
Appreciate it, guys.
Good luck. We'll see you at the grand opening.
Thank you.
We have review and approval of a special event, Annual Ragnar Cape Cod Relay, May 11th and 12th, 2018. Is there anybody here from the Ragnar race? No, there's no one here. This is just a?
Nothing's changed as far as?
Yeah. Well, they've changed the, I think they've changed the route a little bit, but it's all been approved by the police.
Everybody's signed up.
Make a motion to approve the event's application.
Second.
Okay. And that's a roll call on that one as well.
Yes.
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 Done deal. We have item number three, an update on the Cultural Council. Chairman Don Thayer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I figured I would start. I know a lot of people are not familiar with the Mashpee Cultural Council or what a cultural council is, so I think I'll give a little background, if you don't mind, of what the cultural council is, where the funds come from, and then what our local cultural council In Massachusetts, public funding for the arts, humanities, and sciences is provided through a central state agency, the Mass. Cultural Council, and through a network of local cultural councils that serve every city and town in the state. Their mission is to promote excellence, education, diversity, and inclusion in the arts, humanities, and sciences, to foster a rich cultural life for all Massachusetts residents and contribute to the vitality of our communities and economy. The Mass. Cultural Council receives funding from the Mass. Legislature and the National Endowment for the Arts, and it distributes funds through two channels, either direct grants to individuals and organizations or to the local cultural council, which is us. The local cultural council program was established in 1982 and was initially overseen by the Mass. Arts Lottery Council until 1990. It then merged with the Massachusetts Council on Arts and Humanities to form the Mass. Cultural Council. The local cultural councils are made up of volunteers who are appointed by the Appointing Authority of each community. Our purpose is to support public programs that promote excellence, education, diversity, and inclusion in the arts, humanities, and sciences, to foster a rich cultural life in Mashpee. The local cultural councils must consist of at least five members, but you can't have no more than 22. If we ever had 22, we'd probably never know. The membership term is three years with a maximum of two terms, so for a total of six years, at which point, as Barbara knows, you have to take a little break, a year off, and then you can come back on. Annually, we elect a chair, secretary, and treasurer. We do keep the funds that we receive from the state in a separate account, which earns its own interest, and those are the funds that the cultural council has to expend along with, as you will see in your budget, the $90 that we appropriate each year to the cultural council. Let's see. We can spend 5% of our total funds on administrative expenses, which might be postage, printing of, you know, advertisements, something like that. And we actually try not to do that. We try to grant as much of the funding as we can to the different organizations. These are reimbursement grants, so we, the organizations have to hold the event. The applicant either pays the vendor directly, or if they would like to have us pay the vendor directly, then once the event is finalized, we have a whole form they fill out. They have to prove that they've recognized us in their publicity and that we've funded their event. And of course, if we're going to pay them directly, they have to give us all the appropriate IRS tax forms, at which point, if all of those things are met, we can pay the vendor directly. We have to follow all the open meeting and conflict of interest requirements. See, this year, we had, the typical grant ranges between $200 and $500. We had, this year, the council had $4,500 granted by the state to the Mashpee Cultural Council. That's the highest I've, I went back 10 years, that's the highest I've seen it. There was a point where it was about $3,800 when it was several years ago, when the state cut back on the funding, but it's now to $4,500. We try to set priorities. We do have some very broad priorities at this point, which we are discussing about adding some additional requirements. Right now, the applications have to show that they'll benefit the Mashpee community, that it fosters intergenerational interest, serves at-risk or underserved or disadvantaged population, promotes tourism, demonstrates collaboration. A completed online application has to be submitted on time. And then we ask that the applicants name a venue and a contact person for their project when they submit an application. One of the things that we've learned, we were surprised, as I said, we had $4,500 that was granted to us to disperse, and we had 23 or 28 applications received for over $15,000, which created an issue as far as who are we going to fund? When you typically grant $200 to $500, that $4,500 goes pretty quickly. So what we're looking at is, we're trying to, as we meet and tighten our guidelines, we're going to, I mean, we had applications, people trying to hold events off Cape, some down on the Lower Cape. We're trying to encourage all events to be held in Mashpee so that the citizens of Mashpee can benefit from it. Let's see.
The three other towns that are getting part of this money, are these events that are going to take place in Mashpee?
That's the problem. Some of them are not. And we tried to ensure that they were going to be held in Mashpee. There was one in particular that I know will not be held in town. It will be held down on the Lower Cape. Because our guidelines do not specifically express that it has to be here, they were able to apply for reconsideration through the state for their application, and they did receive some funding. So, what we are going to try to do is follow up, especially on the ones that are not held in our community, to see how it benefited the citizens of Mashpee, how many citizens attend from Mashpee. We'll see how that goes. But we are going to meet and we are going to set some priorities that will tighten that up. Just because we expect as funding for nonprofits, organizations, that kind of thing starts to dwindle, more people are going to be seeking this $4,500. So, we're going to really try to do what we can to keep it within the town. Our cycle, we start publicizing the grant in August, and they have until, I think it's October, to submit their applications. We start reviewing them. We make decisions in December and notify the people who we did not approve first. They have 15 days to appeal that, and then if we receive no appeals, we can go ahead and send up the approval letters. I think I provided you with a list of what we had granted this year for fiscal year 18. We, there was actually $5,100 that, a little over $5,100, that we were able to grant because we had funds left over from the prior fiscal year. If we set aside 5% of our administrative expenses and we end up not expending those, we can grant them in the next, in the following fiscal year. I have some individuals who have been part of the cultural council for many, many years. I don't know if anybody wants to speak. Bruce Tavert and Barbara Cotton and John Miller have all been on for a long time, as well as you men. So, I think Barbara would like to speak. We are trying to get her back on because she is wonderful.
Good evening, everybody. I am excited about the Massachusetts Cultural Council and specifically the Mashpee Cultural Council. And when Don and I were talking earlier, I said it's probably one of the most rewarding services that I've been able to participate in. And so the terms are three years, twice, so six years I had served my maximum, but I think the important part of being able to talk to you and to hopefully our viewers tonight is to get them involved and engaged. The role of the council is to make sure that these projects are funding things that happen locally, so things for, things for our kids, things for our senior citizens, young adults, our teen groups. So we do try to reach a large demographic. And the way, a great way to get involved is to solicit your interest to our group. And so we usually try to vet that, and then we'll come back to you as the selectmen and ask you to approve those who want to participate. Does anybody have any specific questions about some of the funding?
I do have a question. Where do, or are most of the funds that you collect, are they from Mashpee or outside?
No. So as Don had intimated, all of the funds that we do get are given to us or by the allocation from Massachusetts Cultural Council.
But we don't receive any donations from private?
No, we do not. I know that there are some local cultural councils that will do their own fundraising in addition to that. We have not opted at any point to this, to do that. We haven't been strong in numbers to do it. The unfortunate thing is we only have an allocation of about $4,500 each year, and like Don said, it does fluctuate to as little as $3,800, as much as $4,500. That number is always subject to change based on whether, you know, the state would like to appropriate that funding or if there's cuts to the fundings for the arts. The goal is always to try to approve as many projects as possible. This year, I think we had an unprecedented number of 28 applicants seeking $4,500. When you look at that, it means that the grants that we are able to make are not as significant. It puts that number down to maybe $100 to $200 per project. And we've received applications for people looking for as much as $1,000. I wish we could give $1,000 away, but that means that we could probably solicit, I'm sorry, we could probably provide about four organizations, and we know that there are so many more than that that would like that funding. But again, our goal is to try to keep that here, and I want to say, and John Miller and I were just talking, I believe that for every $1 that is spent here in the state of Massachusetts, it generates $7 in income. And so we look at that, does it benefit tourism? Does it help to stimulate the economy? Will it benefit our local businesses? And that is something that we do look at. You're very welcome. Thank you. And if anybody's interested, please contact Don Thayer, and we'll take a look at your application.
Do you have her phone number?
I'm sure she can be found maybe through the selectmen's office here at the town hall.
All right. All right. Mr. Manager, it looks like you're up. We have FY 2019 Town Manager Budget Recommendations.
Attached, you will find the recommendations for the next fiscal year. This is after a significant review through the Finance Director, myself, and a lot of other folks. I would like to thank the department heads that were able to meet the challenge relative to getting down to a number that fit our bottom line as far as where we want it to be. We did end up using a little bit more free cash than what we had originally anticipated, but we are comfortable that you have a sustainable budget in front of you and all of the mission critical needs are satisfied. I would ask that the board review this carefully, digest it. If you have any questions, any comments, certainly reach out to my office and obviously if there's any adjustments that you would like to see, then obviously that's subject to further review, but I think the end result is we've pushed it as far as we can go, as far as how much we can sustain. And the good news is we are probably pushing out, as far as the financial forecast is concerned, we are pushing out from the original anticipation of being at a point where we might need an override in 2021. Now, that's pushed out at least a year, if not beyond. So, we've tried to be fiscally conservative, but at the same time, we certainly want to make sure that our services are maintained at a level that people have come to expect and deserve.
Do we have an amount of how much free cash we're going to be using?
Do you want to go to the mic?
Hi. To offset the FY nineteen budget recommendation, we are proposing to use one million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash for the operating budget.
Isn't that usually about what number we've been using?
Well, we've been trying to wean ourselves off if we can. We've had, you know, it was one point five for quite a while.
Yeah, okay.
We've had a couple of years where we didn't use quite as much. We're comfortable using this amount. We do anticipate the local meals tax will be bringing some more revenue in. So that should help us out. Looking at the forecast, I think this is reasonable.
Awesome. Any other questions?
No questions. The, I notice the cost of the transfer station continues to go up. And recall that last year, we had moved towards, you know, what we thought, what we'd said at the time was going to be a two-step process to move away from tax rate subsidy of the operation of the transfer station. So does the revenue assumption in this budget assume a zero contribution from the property tax, or are we going to, and an increase in sticker fee as we talked about, or are we still subsidizing rate?
At this point, there's no change. We're just using the sticker fees as they are. The receipts are estimated based on what the collections have been.
I believe the subsidy is around fifteen or sixteen percent. So I guess my question for the board is whether or not you want us to revisit the fees.
Well, I mean, what I'd like to see is...
That's exactly what we did this year.
We did, but we also, you know, there was all this doom and gloom, like, oh, you changed the pricing, and we're going to drop stickers, and revenue's going to go down, and yada yada. I'd like to see some analysis of what we've seen come in.
That's what I'm talking about. You can't have this conversation till we know how much we...
Chuck in.
Chuck in.
I know. So I guess I'm saying, there's an assumption carried over here that doesn't necessarily reflect the direction we said we wanted to go in.
Which, which for years, we assumed it was twenty-five percent. It was more like seventeen or eighteen.
I know, but we had talked, when we went up, we went up expressly with the idea that we're going to wean off.
I agree with what you're saying.
So I'd like to see...
So let me get the data from the director and find out where we stand in terms of the fees versus the anticipated...
Not only that, but not, you know, not only just how much money came in, but what the splits are on the number of stickers, the second stickers, and whether there's been any meaningful change in tonnage, so that we can know where we're going on that, so that we can make a decision when it comes time to set fees, whether this is what we want to live with or not. Because I thought there was some general agreement that we were going to try and get off the subsidy. Are we expecting any pushback from departments on any of these bottom-line numbers?
Not to my knowledge, but you know something I don't?
Maybe. Okay. And then, you said it, my quick review, you know, we got all these different scenarios, both with wastewater and without, is that with the austerity of the budget, I actually don't see the revenue and budget lines crossing in the scenario one. I mean, if I'm not reading it right, tell me, but it gets close, gets within like thirty-five or forty thousand dollars, which several years out is kind of a overly...
And that's where it gets to the low point, and that's when we say, all right, that's when we're predicting the override is necessary.
But you don't actually, your revenues don't actually, your budget, your expenses, level fund, level service expenses don't exceed your revenue side, right?
It's not actually level service expenses in the forecast. We, I looked at the trends for the prior three years, and based on the trends and with the contracts that have been negotiated and settled upon, we were able to probably have a little bit better projection on those. And different line items went up by different amounts based on what...
Is it kind of a level service projection?
The expenses, I think the assumptions for the expenses were two percent, I believe, increase. Fixed costs, let's see, those went up ten percent. Health insurance, I believe I did twelve percent. We had initially done ten, but I did twelve percent increases. Salaries, two percent, because that was what was negotiated. And expenses, we did two and a half percent, and then I think we dropped it down as we got closer to the override.
But at no point, I mean, this isn't improvement in the prior forecast, which showed the lines crossing and actual deficit.
Right.
This doesn't show a deficit anymore.
No. I don't think we ever hit a deficit in the other one. I tried to ensure that we never hit a deficit. I think we came...
Close.
Close, right.
Very close.
And I think what happened in the, I don't have the first scenario with me, but in two thousand and twenty-one was when we...
Yeah, I thought that's when the, I thought the lines did cross.
That's when they connected. And then that's why we were proposing in two thousand and twenty-two, the override, and that's when you see the bump. You see in this updated scenario, which includes the FY eighteen tax recap and then the budget recommendation...
So you built in a bump into this?
Correct. That, the, that, what you're seeing, and it was in the scenario, the initial scenarios.
That hasn't changed.
That has not changed.
I know, but the assumptions weren't, I mean, it's been a year. So the assumptions have, the assumptions weren't articulated in here. So it wasn't immediately obvious.
Well, they were, they were, because we looked at the history in the initial ones. We looked at, you know, when you're forecasting, you have to look at the average of the prior, I use three years. So that is what we did when we did the initial forecast. As we go year by year, it allows us to update what those initial numbers were, and then go forward from there. Again, it will be another three-year average. That's, that's how the Department of Revenue suggests that we do our forecasting. They say, take the three years prior for both revenues and your expenses, unless you know something in particular, and use those for your projections. And that's exactly what we did.
Okay.
And we did that for the state aid. What I did is I looked back, unfortunately, our state aid, the state aid is not keeping up with the assessment, the increase in assessments. That is reflected in here, the average increase in assessments versus the average increase in state aid.
I plead guilty. I missed on page ten the assumptions in small print.
Sorry.
Small.
Another thing I'll note, is, you know, that scenario one, I was actually surprised how little relative difference the wastewater scenario laid on top of that.
And, and I believe that was because of when we started the wastewater in our scenarios...
You bumped it out to the end of the cycle.
Right, right. So you're seeing just the very beginning stages in that.
Okay.
I'm still wondering where the money's coming from for the wastewater.
I'm not going there.
Okay. That was my big question.
I thought you had a secret fund.
We've got this scenario with it.
Unfortunately, everyone's...
And I'm wondering where it's coming from.
Well, but I think this gives us the information we need to finally get down to it.
Wow.
So...
I don't know if that's good or bad.
Well, yeah, I know. We've been kicking the can down the road a long time. I think this is very helpful, in that, you know, it gives us a pretty good picture of what the operating scenario looks like, you know, and increment above and beyond our rate is pretty minor. You know, it's in the single, low single digits of percentage. So I think it's at least, you know, it doesn't blow up your budget. You can decide you don't want to pay for it, or you want to shift it off to somebody else. But on the face of it, it doesn't strike me as something that we can't have a mature conversation about how we're going to do it. And I don't know that you're ever going to have any more information than you have right now. So I think it's time to get on.
No, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, nobody wants to bite the bullet, but...
So I think it's very useful analysis that you guys did. Thank you, Dawn.
It's a lot of work.
I just want to give public credit to the Finance Director because I know I can be very demanding as far as data is concerned, and she's worked a lot of late evenings, and she's compiled a lot of data for me on very short notice, and she's done an extraordinary job preparing these packages before you. So I thank her publicly.
So in the area, we're somewhere between two and three percent year over year?
For regular operating expenses, two and a half percent is what I used.
For this year to now, for the recommendation, Town Manager's recommendation?
Oh, the Town Manager's...
No, not your assumptions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm talking fiscal eighteen to the recommended nineteen. We're somewhere between two and three percent?
Yes, yes. Altogether, well, it depends on what you're looking at. The, with fixed costs, I believe it's four point six percent is the total, which, with the fixed costs included in there.
But the labor side?
The labor side, I did not pull out salaries only. That would be the two percent increase and then any step...
I'm talking labor in general. You all associate...
Expenses and everything. The, I believe the overall for town and school departments, no fixed costs was a two point three percent increase over FY eighteen.
Okay.
Dawn, where's capital and expenses come in here?
If you look at, I don't know if you have...
All right, they're in the...
Remember, we funded that differently, too.
I know we funded differently, but is, are they in, those numbers in here?
Forecast, no. Only the wastewater is included in those scenarios.
So capital expenses are not in...
No, they are not.
It goes down. Why don't you...
Is everybody satisfied?
So when do you go fi, when is this final for you, according to your calendar, or are we done?
Only done when you're done.
When we finish that.
When we're through asking questions and... No further questions?
Nope.
Dawn, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion of communication from the Masque Wampanoah Tribe. We received a letter, and they have the date. There were three different dates, which, they were open to conversation. And I guess one of my only concerns is, I'd like to have it here, I feel as though we have it here, and there was a concern, I know Wayne's not here, but there was an issue with television, being televised. We're not on channel eighteen, I believe, from the tribal headquarters. I could be wrong, but I thought that's what was brought to my attention. And I don't know if that would cause a problem with the television, televising of the meeting. The other thing is, we have the two meetings. So the location is one. I mean, we're just this board. We'd rather have it here, and I do have a concern about the being televised and broadcast. So that's, that's one of my issues there. But also, just have the tribe come here, not that, and then maybe we, in our next, our next conversation, we could go there if we can remedy the communication televised situation. The other thing is, we have three dates. We have Wednesday, January twenty-fourth. They're all Wednesdays, which is a problem for me. I have...
It is for me also.
Because of my, my county government commitment. I'm sure there's probably one I can fit, but I don't know how anybody else, if anybody else has a Wednesday...
When is our next meeting is?
I don't have it in front of me.
February...
February twelfth.
February twelfth.
The twelfth. February twelfth.
Just speaking for me, I don't care when we meet, other than I want to meet soon, I guess, and I actually don't even care where we meet.
Right.
My concern is the proposed agenda.
And don't forget about the MOU, and the MOU.
Well, the agenda as proposed is introduction, scheduling of future meetings, discussion designation liaisons and future agenda items, which basically, it's a meet and greet meeting, no substance in my mind. We have a number of things of importance that I think we need to talk about, and I actually have no interest whatsoever, and actually won't participate in a meeting that's a discussion about what the next meeting is going to be about. Because it's taken us sixteen months to get here, and wait sixteen months to have a meeting to talk about what we're going to talk about the next meeting or the shape of the table. So, you know, I think this, as suggested, you know, communication, and you, Mr. Chair, that there's at least five things that I think we need to talk about.
I, and I agree, and I think the five that you brought forward, but before I put those in, I thought we all had a participation in this, and not just have five, there might be somebody else who might want to put one in.
There could be twenty.
Right.
Well, I'm just saying, there's no lack of things to talk about on how we can partner with our...
And that's what this meeting is for, just so that we know what we want to discuss, our points of interest, and what we want to discuss, and see where we go from there. And then we'll, I absolutely will form an agenda and a matter of conversation, not an agenda, but a conversation and points.
My view is that this is much like any other meeting that we hold as a chair. You have the, you know, you have the authority to set the agenda jointly with our tribal partners, and something you can all agree on. But I just threw out issues like...
Right. And absolutely, what I'll do is, I mean, if this works with you, I'll do just that. Let's, if we can, well, we can work on the pinpointing a day. Let's nail that down, first of all. And the location, I mean, how everybody feels about that.
I'm going to agree with you, Mr. Chairman, as far as, I would like to see at least a couple other options besides just a Wednesday evening that happens to be...
On Wednesday, I can't do Wednesdays.
See, that's...
February, I can tell you that right now.
You know, besides personal commitments and just...
That's why...
Wayne's is a tough night. So if we had another, a couple other options to pick from...
I believe that's a tribal council meeting night. I wonder if they would be more receptive to coming to our meetings.
Our meeting on a Monday.
Well, we banged our shoe on the table about getting a meeting.
Yep.
So I'm, I don't want the logistical issues to overshadow and obscure the fact that we very much want to have a meeting.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, like, we ought to be able to come to it.
But it's just, just getting a quorum. I mean, at this point, John can't make it. I can make one of them, but I can't, I mean, my Wednesday meetings are set.
Well, one of them's already off the table because it's...
Right.
It's this Wednesday.
Right, right. We're done today, right. So, so we need to do a little bit of work on this and come up with something.
Could it be at our regular scheduled meeting?
That's what, I'd love to see.
As a proposal?
I'll make it an early, you know, would you, could we come in at six and have a conversation at six?
Why don't you get in touch with the chairman, Cedric, and see...
I can do that, absolutely.
Instead of trying to work it out among us, and we don't know what their schedules are.
Having it at our regular meeting.
Okay. Let me see if we can make that happen.
Just to facilitate that, if anybody has any nights they can't do, could they perhaps convey those to the chairman?
Only this month.
I'm just saying, but we need to do it this month, in February, because we signed an agreement that expires at the end of February.
We did.
Unless we want to, so if anybody has other night problems, just to make it easier on Tom, he's not chasing us around, if there's nights you can't do it, let him know tomorrow, and then he can have a conversation with tribal leadership and come up with a date that's mutually agreeable. As long as it's open to the public, I don't care where I meet.
I can make any, except Wednesday.
I can make...
I prefer any day of Wednesday.
I keep Monday nights open no matter what, because of selectmen's meetings.
So where we at, we can't, twelfth is our meeting, so if we...
You can have talk to him.
Right. Let me see, but that's, that's the one day that I can bring up.
The thing is, Lawrence, there's enough to talk about, Lawrence. If it's a special meeting for us, it's a special meeting for us.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'm fine with that also. And if, and if everybody, Andrew had forwarded five issues that he might, we should get to have a conversation. And if interview has anything else, and as well as the tribe, I think I'll, you'll see what Cedric or the tribe might, what questions they may want to ask of us. So, okay. So let's work on that and get, come up with a better date, and we'll move forward. Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I make a motion, we move the board's selectmen enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with a police captain, whereas his discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, and that the board will convene thereafter in open session.
Second.
Okay. Motion to second. Do the roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.